Okay, at 7:00 PM I'm going to call this meeting to order. Will everybody stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Cheryl, will you take it?
Yeah, I will.
We try.
President.
Here.
You.
Yeah.
Carl.
Oh, here.
Here.
Okay. So Councilman Couch is out, do I have a motion to excuse him?
It's moved.
Okay.
Next second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilwoman Cornigay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Approval of the agenda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, a second by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And looking for approval of the consent agenda, items 1 through 12. Don't be shy.
I move we accept the consent agenda and items 1 through 12.
All right. Do you have a second?
No.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Dan Lee, seconded by Councilman Owen, approval of the consent agenda 1 through 12. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a special guest tonight, the Skagit Trail Builders, Jim Taylor. Hi, Jim.
Hi.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Shall we just get started?
Yeah.
Skagit Trail Builders, we started... Advance, come on.
I think you have to point it this way.
You have to point toward... You have that way.
Jim? Yeah. I know it's awkward, isn't it?
Thank you. Uh, Skagit Trail Builders, we started our work a decade ago in Mount Vernon at Little Mountain Park.
Jim, you need to speak in your microphone.
Okay.
You can hold it. Yeah, you can turn it, sure.
Okay. A decade ago, we started our work at Little Mountain. We built there in seven miles of trails in seven years after we broke ground, and that we broke ground a decade ago. Typically what happens is before you break ground, you spend a couple of years advocating to make it possible. And so after we broke ground, we put in 14,000 volunteer hours in order to build those seven miles of trails. So we have a new project, and it's right here in Cedar Woolley. We're very excited about it. The project is called the Northern State Regional Trails Project. The partners are all shown at the bottom. The Skagit County Parks and Rec, they reached out to us originally. I knew Bryan Adams well over a period of 10 years while we were building trails at Little Mountain. And with Bryan's help, we brought a partnership together that was already in existence, they just kind of brought us on in. The port was already in conversations with Bryan. The city was there at the meetings that we were all attending called the SWIFT Work Group. Cascade Job Corps, they had a representative there. And then we got to know the Rotary making a presentation to them. Oops. Oh, darn it. I must have a heavy finger. Okay. This partner just recently came on, and this is really a central partner for us. This was made possible by the city introducing us to them. It's really important for a volunteer trails organization to be able to work as a nonprofit, to be able to accept donations and allow people that make donations to declare them as a donation. So this came together in just the last couple of weeks, and we're very excited about it. The work that we do starts out with local trail advocacy. It takes a couple of years typically to launch a new trails project. This one has come together pretty quickly, so there seems to be a lot of interest, and we're excited about that. We start out designing, the work that we do is we design the trails, we reach out to the community after we put together a concept, we, you know, we lead and we train our volunteers, and then we oversee the projects and do all of the planning, taking care of logistics. So let's give a, I'll give you a quick overview of the project. We started out a number of months back by, and we went through some seasons, literally walking the entire resource, reviewing meadows, streams, all the corners of the park. That's a rock that's so big that it appears on Leidar maps. And that's our crew leader standing up on top trying to orient himself. Here's a large beaver pond in the northeast corner of the county property. Some of you have probably been out there and seen it, but it takes a little walking to get to it. It has real interpretive opportunities for a hiking trail or something around because it's beautiful. Okay, there are a lot of forested areas out there, but they're usually small spots in isolated corners and things. That's one of them up in the northwest corner. We navigated the property lines, that's on the north side of the park, there's a lot of property lines that you have to orient yourself and find the dry areas, because when we build trails, we want to build them so they're usable for four seasons. So you want to build them in the high places that drain well and take the seasons into account. Okay. There's the second attractive area up there. We get these little bands of trees out there, so what you try to do is you try to follow them and take advantage of them. Right there is the place where we're building our first trail right now. It's adjacent to Hanson Creek, where Art Tufti, our master trail builder friend right there, is standing, is a corner that we've already built a trail through on, and it's the first trail that we're building. We explored a lot of corners of the park. That's one area, you can see by the foliage there and stuff, that it's a wet area that holds water, so we're not going to build there. But we needed to look at the whole resource to see where the opportunities are. So after we did that, we compiled all of the data, we GPSed everything that we did, we kept journals, and we put together a plan that we presented to the SWIFT Work Group, and we all agreed on what our highest priorities would be. And the first one is called the Pump House Trail. And the second trail is the Brick Yard Creek Trail that's on port property. So we started out on county property. Right there is the first trail that we're working on. Where Art was standing was on that corner right there. We've got all of this area right through here, that's all hand-built, and we've got most of that in good shape now. We've gravelled it, we've built some corners, we've crossed a wet area, and the work up here is all going to be done in the next month or so by machine. This build is a little different than we did at Little Mountain. Everything we did there was hand-built on this resource because of needing more materials and just a different vegetation we're dealing with. We're going to use machines a little bit more. So that will be roughed out up there by machine. It's a mini excavator that Art Tufti, our master trail builder friend, will be working on. And after he takes off a lot of the berries and some of the stuff, it's just hard to deal with by hand, then we'll go through there and start rocking and shaping and compacting. Ah, darn it. Okay. Ah, darn. Let's back. Okay. Up here is that first trail that we're already working on, and then down below here is the other trail, it's called the Brick Yard Creek Trail that's on port property. The gate right here is the pond, if you're familiar with the hospital area. And so our desire is to be able to link all three properties, that which is owned by the city, the port, and the county on into our first trail loop that will go like this. And so that's the reason we chose these two as our starting trails. And so the next thing, and we haven't really gone through it in any detail yet, is the building of the bridge, which is already going on. To link these three properties, we've got to cross Hanson Creek, and the bridge that used to be there collapsed decades ago, and so we're rebuilding it. Hello? Okay, this is what the bridge looks like. We've built that bridge before. That's a bridge that we built for a nature trail that we put out at Little Mountain Park, so it's very familiar to us. The stringers are already staged at the worksite, the railing panels have been built, and the special sessions have already been scheduled. And we're using a small team of individuals, because it's carpentry skills more than anything else for this build of the bridge. The final assembly will be the last week of this month, and it needs to be completed by September 1st. Right there, you can see it, the abutment on the east side of Hanson Creek. And there, up above on the right-hand side, you can see Patrick Dillon smiling and looking toward us. He is the landscape architect that works closely with Bryan Adams there, pictured in the middle, and Heather Rogerson of the port. And the three of them working together is what made this possible. There, the stringers are staged, and that's Jerry Granahan, our crew boss, standing there with the big smile on his face, he loves to build bridges. This was our first day building the railing panels there at the Parks and Rec shop, Skagit County Parks and Rec shop in Burlington. And we were doing layout on the left-hand side there on the very first panel, and by the end of the day, we had more than half of them put together. So now they're all ready to go and staged there at the site. Not the worksite, but the shop. Okay, bridge assembly goes as follows here, and this, I'm just giving you a look back at how we assembled the bridge at Little Mountain. We hauled the stringers in there about a quarter of a mile. We used two dingoes to haul it on in, which is a little tricky with all the bends, if you've ever been on that trail out there. I'll get it eventually. Okay, good enough. So you can see the finished bridge there. In the back and forth, you saw how we assembled it. But it's a real basic bridge, stringers flashing, some hardware to hold the stringer straight. It's all connected on down to the abutments. In that case, we had to build our own abutments, but we're using those over 100-year-old abutments that are out there presently. So after the bridge is complete, on September 14th, we resume our normally scheduled trail building sessions, and we do monthly sessions on the second Saturday of each month. These are what sessions look like. This was a well-attended session. We like to have a minimum of 15, 16 people. We've had turnouts as high as 66, which is a little unmanageable. What we did at Little Mountain was we did the thing that we called the Featured Group Program, where you reach out to community organizations and try to get them to come on out, and we just, we asked that they, try to have a minimum of six people, and that just kind of boosts our numbers a little bit, and you bring in some new blood that way. So that was a safety meeting that we always hold at the beginning of our sessions, and our sessions start at 10 and end at 4:30. Job Corps students have been very involved in this program. We've been excited about that relationship. And there are three of them are doing the tread work that precedes our capping it with crush rock. We try to have really good lunches. Everybody works really hard, and to be sustainable and have them walk away at the end of the day feeling fulfilled usually means a full belly in the middle of the day. It's old school, but it works. There's a familiar face there. The lady on the left, her name is Leslie Eastep, she's a local doctor. She and her husband, also a doctor, have been lunch donors for years. They came out to Little Mountain Park and would bring us lunch pretty much every other session. And my wife spelled her off once in a while, and then sometimes when people are busy, when you're a nonprofit, you have the resources to reach on out and buy a lunch, Subway, do whatever, but make certain that your people have something to eat. Here's a perfect example of what it looks like when things go really well. This young lady came on out and started working with us when she was much smaller than that. And here she is, and we'll see in the next slide, years later, much bigger, same smile, but working away and becoming a leader within our group. She trains individuals, she's just fun. And we've seen that a number of times. I've been really fortunate to be able to write letters of recommendation for officers that are applying for a position at the Crookland Police Department and things, but they came out to us as Cub Scouts. And so it's just really fun to see young people do really well and just really sink their teeth into something like this. So back to what we're doing, it's the regional trail system, but the regional trail system is going to do more than that, it's a double duty. It's also going to serve as the city of Cedar Woolley's community trail system. So for it to be something of regional significance, it's going to, it would help us if we're able to reach into the higher elevations and be able to gain access to property that's adjacent to the resource out here to gain some higher elevations. Something that's important is to have views and to feel like people have traveled a distance. You know, the smaller community trail systems, like if we never were able to break out of the resource up here, it's still important and would be used all the time. It's a daily resource for people to make part of their exercise regiment, but it becomes more important as a draw for a city if you're able to create something that's just a little bit more significant. And so that's what I, that's the point that I really want to make as we close this out now. Come on. Questions? Anything? Thank you.
I have a question, actually. I'm curious, once all the trails are connected, how far, how many miles?
Well, the trail plan that we have right now, everything is subject to approval, and we're kind of taking a piecemeal approach to things because it requires those approvals and things. What we're taking is a strategic loop approach, where we just keep adding systematically to go further and further. And so we just keep our fingers crossed that everybody stays on board, is excited, and that we keep getting approvals and more opportunity comes our way that way. And so I can't give a really hard answer on that, but what we did at Little Mountain, we got seven miles in there in seven years. We were building by hands alone, you know, other than sometimes moving some material on in with a toter or something like that. So we should be able to build faster since we're going to be able to employ machines, but if you employ a machine, you got to pay for the machine, and it costs money. So, I mean, it would be nice to think that we can achieve 10 miles of trails out there in a shorter period of time, but it's all, you know, we'll just have to see.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Carl. Do you need any volunteers for lunch?
You know, I'm hopeful, you know, we haven't put the word out yet for September because we're kind of busy with the bridge right now. But yeah, we always accept invites, you know, and now that we have a nonprofit partner, it's a charitable contribution.
Carl has a question.
Great work.
Thank you.
As we have, you and I have had multiple coffees and gotten together to talk about this, and it's just amazing, it's phenomenal what we're seeing, to get people out into the trail, into nature. It's one of the great ways to instill conservation among folks, especially with our youth, and it's just a great demographic of the age groups that you have coming together there, and also of the community partners that you're able to wrangle together to make it happen. And I really appreciate your persistence.
Thank you.
So just to kind of put some guardrails on this, so we're not going to see motorized on those trails like UTVs. Would we see bicycles? Would we see equestrian? How are folks that are differently able, maybe able to take a tricycle, bicycle up there?
Yeah. You know, that all has to be worked out with our partners, and so those conversations need to be had. The things that I have seen while traveling to other trail systems and things that I thought was, I thought is a potentially really good fit for this resource is in the south, there's something called e-bikes now, which are electric bikes, and they're low-impact. And the wonderful thing about them is they accommodate individuals that might have some physical limitations and allow them to get on out. And a perfect example was a 90-year-old gentleman, he was a veteran, that I met, that used to be an avid cyclist and wasn't able to get out anymore at the level that he wanted to. And I met him, we had a huge smile on his face, he bought a new e-bike, and he had range again, and he had an amazing smile on his face and was passionate about it. So those are the opportunities. A mix of motorized and the non-motorized stuff like we're talking about, I agree, that shouldn't happen in that resource. It's just not a good fit. But e-bikes, I see them as being a potential fit. Now, that's not something that's widely held in our area here in the Pacific Northwest yet. It's a trend that's coming from the south. But I've seen it in veteran parks in particular, and I think there's an opportunity for us to kind of do something that's exciting and lead the region by doing something that might be a little outside of the norm. That's important.
So how about equestrian? Would horses be?
Equestrian, yeah.
They'd be ready for that, then?
Yeah. Now, there are some areas out there that are so wet that equestrian just doesn't fit in some areas. So not everything that we build is going to accommodate equestrian. Some of the main spurs that we harden well and stuff will, and so it'll all be really well-marked, and we've, I have friends within the equestrian community, we've had that discussion. And the one thing that I wanted to make really clear to them is we're not taking anything away that they currently have. We may not be able to accommodate them on everything we build, but we're not taking anything away.
I have another question. Could you make it public or state like how people might want to volunteer? If they want to volunteer, could they, who do they contact?
Sure.
I know it's on the posters, but...
It's on the posters, and then it's on our website, and I manage the website, and I've got to update it again now. But, and any ideas that this group has to improve our outreach, I am all about. Okay?
Thank you. How about they, who do they contact? Like who do people contact if...
They contact me.
Okay.
And what would help? Phone number?
Probably email or something? An email, probably?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Simple. Anything else?
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
All right. And we are moving on to staff reports. Lieutenant McElrath.
I think all I got is, we're geared up to continue our hiring process, so we have still one vacancy left to fill. We have 24 candidates on Tuesday and Wednesday, so we're hoping we can pull a good candidate from that interview and move on to getting them through the academy and such. I think that's about all I have right now.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question for law enforcement.
Sure.
I've noticed, we talked a little bit about this, but an uptick in graffiti on State Street and also on Township, and just wanted to make that aware so we can maybe get some more crews out on that. Additionally, I had a question about last night's activity with the K-9 on 400 Central, and because I know we don't have the K-9 and we have to rely on other resources, which is great that so many responded to help us out, but how long did it take to get the K-9 out there?
I don't actually know how long it took to get the K-9, did not look that up. They did come out and assist us with the track, and it was, I thought the suspects left in a vehicle, so unsuccessful. They're relatively pretty quick in a prior response like that, 15, 20 minutes.
Cool. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Chief Klinger.
Just a couple items, Mayor. We had, this last Sunday and Monday, we did our Camp Phoenix and the Burn Foundation. We went up for the opening ceremonies on Sunday. Monday, we took our engine up, played with the kids, and then we cooked dinner for the camp. The Volunteer Association did, so they had a really great time, they always do. We just love going up there and hanging out with those guys. This week, we were supposed to be doing hose testing, I think I told you that at the last council meeting. We got a phone call Monday morning about 6 o'clock from our people that were supposed to be doing the hose testing for us, and they had unforeseen circumstances that they were unable to attend, so they're going to reschedule, so we'll be getting that done hopefully sometime here in the near future where we still have decent weather. And Todd, Chief Olson wanted me to give you an update on the training site down there. As you know, the train is, the train car is in place. We now have the ditches dug for the new gas line, the concrete pad for the propane tank's been poured. We just, we'll be getting the new propane tank, I think it's tomorrow, or either tomorrow or Friday will be installed, and then they'll get the propane lines hooked up. And the goal is to have this up and running by the second week in September, so we'll be able to start burning on it. So we'll make sure we let you know so you can come down and see, because it's liquid propane, it should be a pretty good show, so.
That's fascinating. I do have a question for you regarding the, so I know that the Camp Phoenix, that actually comes from the money that is generated from...
And the goal is to have this up and running by the second week in September, so we'll be able to start burning on it. So we'll make sure we let you know so you can come down and see because it's liquid propane and it should be a pretty good show, so.
That's fascinating. I do, I do have a question for you regarding the, so I know that the Camp Phoenix, that actually comes from the money that is generated from Give Burn a Boot.
Yeah.
The option that you and others have. When are we hosting ours next?
Ours is in October 26th. It'll be, is going to be our event and what we do is we, we have the dinner and auction that we do every year. And last year, we raised about $34,000 that we were able to give to the kids, so.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Good evening. So I know everybody's curious about what's going on with Habitat, so I always like to point out what they're doing there. They applied for two more permits for their project down on Beatty Street and one of their houses is drywalled in, ones that they started earlier this year. So they'll be probably working several months to finish that one up. And the second one that they started earlier this year is also well underway and probably getting pretty close to being sheet rocked as well. And then presumably they'll start on the next two and then probably in about a month or two. Sometimes they move slow, but that's the update with that one. The planning commission is meeting next week. They're going to continue their discussion of accessory dwelling units. They wanted to take it deliberately and slowly, so they're not rushing ahead with anything. So this will probably be the case for several months before the city council sees anything from the planning commission on ADUs. And last council meeting, council approved the urban village mixed-use overlay regulations. Those regulations officially went into effect today. We have not received any applications yet, so we didn't really expect that that would be the case. Any application would take the applicant a while to put together because they're sort of a complex project. What I will be trying to bring to the council, I'm not sure if I'll have the opportunity to do it at the next planning, next council meeting, but an update to our fee schedule. And one of those updates would be fees for any urban village mixed-use application form because they are rather complex. It would make sense to have some additional fee for any application associated with that. Similar to what we do for a planned residential development, we have additional fees for that beyond a typical subdivision. So maybe to the council next time. I'd like to hurry on that one, just for obvious reasons. And then starting Friday, two days from now, Catherine Weir, our new assistant planner, will be starting. So thank you for making that possible. I look forward to her starting full-time.
That's great. Thank you. You got a lot going on. Yeah. I just want to make a comment about Habitat. So you brought that up. Habitat is building here in Cedar Woolley on Beatty Street and they are looking for volunteers. Councilwoman Carnegie and I had a Saturday where we went out there and volunteered, did some painting, but they work Thursday through Saturday. So if you have a chance to do that. All right. Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent calendar this evening that's been approved was the ratification of the award of the Complete Streets Sidewalk Project. Got a good bid on that and we've had the pre-con meeting and they're starting work on Monday. So we're glad to get that one off the drawing boards and on the field. David will be placing the ad tomorrow for the Robinson-Borth Seth Sewer Extension Project and we'll be bringing that back to you after it closes. It'll be a normal award at a council member meeting, probably two from now. That's the main things that are going on, but that would be the last of our in-house designs for the year. And you have, we'll be discussing later the TIP grants that we've been working on. Those are due on Friday. We have two going in. I thought I should also let you know the BNSF overcrossing that has the graffiti on it. We met with BNSF, Aaron and I, yesterday and had a great meeting with them, covered a lot of backed-up things that needed to be done, one of which was that. And so they've given their blessing to us, painting that over, and so we'll schedule that with our crew and they'll have to have an observer down for that and they've agreed to do that. So we'll get that done hopefully in the next two weeks. They've also agreed, after many years of talking with them about it, to allow us to remove the rails at the remaining crossings from the old concrete line at Metcalf and Puget and also that 400 feet that is east of Township, which has been in the weed patch for years. So our crews already started on that and we wanted to go as soon as they said yes. And we'll have those out in the next two weeks. And BNSF has also committed to removing the rail between state, the rest of the rail between state and Ferry, which is a great thing for us. We hope that'll continue to getting the rest of that line out down near the high school as well, but they have committed to doing that in the very near future, in the next couple of weeks. So those are, those are really good things. I know we've been discussing those for years and we're glad and we're thankful that they've finally agreed to make those happen. And Aaron has been a big part of that in working with them on some other things that BNSF wants. And we've got some good ideas on how to partner with that and he can share that when that's appropriate. That's most of what I wanted to report. I've got a rather lengthy memorandum in your packet that I hope you had a chance to look at. If you have any questions about the many projects we've got in the works, I've tried to give you a good update on that and I'll do that periodically as we have time. One thing I did want to mention, and it ties in with the ADA sidewalk project that we're doing, I'll be putting together a more comprehensive memo, but I have a pretty good paragraph on that in the memorandum there that I appreciate you taking a look at. I've mentioned to you that we, we're pretty exposed on getting the ramps and sidewalks updated in Cedar Woolley. We've been making some fairly decent progress with projects like this and all the others we've built over the last few years, but we still have quite a bit to do. David Lee just recently completed an update of the inventory for me and we have over 900 of the ADA ramps around town. Fortunately, there's only about 170 of them that require full replacement, but there's another over 300 that require some work, either putting in the truncated domes or fixing grates and stuff like that. We've done just an order of magnitude estimate on that and it's well over a million dollars for the ramps alone. There's also the related sidewalks, many of those in poor shape in town, and then driveway approaches, which also theoretically have to meet the slope requirements for that. So I'll bring something to you in the fall or this winter, presenting our ideas on how we can keep that moving forward. You have been budgeting $50,000 a year in the last few years for ramp, sidewalk repairs and we've been using that, we've accumulated the last three years for the project that was just awarded. And we want to continue that and propose enhancing that and actually going, by the way, that's funded from REIT funds. We'd like to bump that up so we can make a meaningful dent in that million-dollar-plus problem we've got and to start moving forward at that. We would anticipate doing a project like the Complete Streets project every two years at least. And then with the other build projects we're doing, we hope between the two and a period of about 10 years to maybe knock that inventory out and get it finished. And so we'll be coming, working on that in the budget process and also reporting that to you a little later. So that's all I had tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
I have a question. Speaking of ADA, I was wondering if you, if there was any plans or if there ever was any talk of having ramps at the American Legion, since there's so many seniors that use that? I don't think there is any. I take, I take a senior veteran there occasionally and I have to go and drop him off, make him wait, go park, and then come back to let him in. And it would be really nice if they had parking there for some of those folks in there. It gets pretty busy. Has that ever been a consideration?
Well, we are replacing the ramps at the corner there, right by the Legion. There are ramps there now, but we're updating all of those on Murdoch. That's part of this project. But if you're speaking of one directly in front of the building, we didn't, actually I didn't know there was a need there, to be honest.
Yeah, they've been asking for that because it's, it would be too far of a walk for, even for him who's using a cane, but I can understand it'd be too far of a walk for a lot of those folks to get just even to the front door.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that suggestion. We do have some surplus in the bid this year, some $70,000. We were planning to use that for part of the work on Murdoch, so I'll ask David to take a look at that and see. Now, are we talking right in front of the front doors? Is that what we're thinking? A couple of handicap spots there?
That's what they're...
There are some there in the vicinity. I'll have to look at that, but I'll, I'll put that in the mill and see what we can do with that.
Thanks.
We'll make an attempt to talk to the folks over there and see what they have to say. Now, don't they have parking lot access to the building there as well?
They do in the, in the back, but they said there's not even any back there. I haven't looked, but they, there's not any back there either. I mean, I'm not sure how far of a walk that is, but what they're asking for is just one for easy access in the front.
Okay. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Mr. Deion?
Yeah. Mark, I'm just following up on the request to smooth out the alley between Marshall and Jennings on the east side of Township. I had some neighbors, plural, talk about the landscape driving through there. I know at one point in time, years ago, we had a problem at the end of the street there, but that's been remedied. So I was wondering when we could get that on the schedule to get some pea gravel and a grader out there. Behind the adult family home.
There's a request that was brought to us earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. Might have dropped through the cracks.
No worries. Thanks a lot.
So that's on, on Marshall Street?
Between Marshall and Jennings is the alleyway on the east side of Township.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Kelly.
Mark, can you tell me where this sidewalk and ADA ramp improvements are going in? I didn't see that in the...
Yeah, they're spread in a, you can look at the council memo. I think I have it recited in there in the consent calendar. But essentially on Murdoch Street, between Ferry and State, we're fixing the ramps and the sidewalks that are busted up in that area. That's over by the parking lot that we normally use for the Lagerrodo carving exhibitions and that kind of things. We're adding a ramp, the other side of the ramp we have in front of City Hall on the other side, Martha Rose's property over there. There's no ramp on that side. We're adding that one in. We're replacing two down at the State Street High School and also putting the pedestrian actuated beacons there. And let's see, on Third Street, we did all the sidewalks and ramps on the east side with our project in 2012. We're doing the ones that didn't get done on the west side this year. There's two in front of Cedar Woolley High School that the high school is actually paying for. And then the area by the new restaurant there at the old filling station at Third and State Street, we're adding sidewalks, parking on that stretch that doesn't currently have that.
By Shelley Shack?
By Shelley Shack, right in front of that, yes. And there's some other scattered places. I think the two on Township at Wicker Road, we're doing those in preparation for an overlay project we're doing next year there as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Berg?
All right. So the first item is, I just wanted to acknowledge Officer Laura Carr's dogged effort on code enforcement land. You approved tonight, you ratified an agreement, and we've actually did receive the check this week, a $25,000 fine. It was related to a primary violation of boarded-up windows. So I think probably the related request you may get at some point would be for the acquisition of a law enforcement UAV, consistent with the recently adopted UAV policy and funded through court and code enforcement fines. In that case, again, thanks to Laura. You know, that is a, that's a lot of work for her to go through and, you know, a lot of folks who are on the receiving end of code enforcement don't, don't actually want to do the work. So, you know, there's, in this particular instance, she and I together dealt with, I'm going to guess, at least eight different people who are, were at various times responsible for dealing with the problem. You know, that's just each one, you know, starting all over again with, why are you calling us? Why is it our problem? When do you want it fixed? How do you want it fixed? And so on. So, you know, it felt good to get that one done and I really appreciate her efforts because it is a lot of work, but it makes a difference to the quality of life in the neighborhoods. And so the next piece of that one will be to see that property actually transform from what it is to a good neighbor. Second item is on the library front. The contractor mowed up on Monday as per plan and today was kind of day one of actual work. So if you happened to be by, you would have seen equipment moving, the preload pile. You won't see a job shack because they rented the building right next to the site. So their job shack is the old post office annex property. So I think the subs are probably excited about heated restrooms this winter. And so that's that. You'll have a monthly library project update. Started to track things like change orders along with all the contracts that I'm signing with delegated authority. So I probably won't go into a whole lot of detail, but if you ever have any questions, just ask and I'll be happy to share whatever you'd like to know. At this point, the project is still on time and on budget. Last item then for me is we've got a shared sick leave request and kind of consistent with our evolving process of communicating with the council and respecting the privacy of employees, medical conditions involved, I guess I'm, I'm just letting you know and if you've got a concern, let us know that we intend to enter into an MOU with the Cedar Woolley Public Safety Guild regarding a shared sick leave request and we'll probably do that tomorrow. And that's it. It's just a busy summer with a lot of exciting activity here in Cedar Woolley.
Councilman Kelly.
Yeah. Aaron, what is our code on boarded-up windows? I have a, you know, question about that, so.
Yeah, so boarded-up windows aren't allowed to remain beyond, is it one year, John?
It's either one year or six months.
Yeah, I can't remember. It's one year or six months. So there's a time period where you're allowed to essentially deal with a broken window. I noticed, for example, the Ford Garage now has a boarded-up window. So, you know, the clock is ticking and, you know, I'll be communicating with the owner on that first as a courtesy and then ultimately if we don't get a response through code enforcement. So I'd have to double-check on the timeframe. I just don't remember off the top of my head if it's six months or a year. At the end of that, then it's the standard code enforcement fines, which are $100 a day, ramping up to $500 a day by the fifth day and $500 a day thereafter. So it's a, it's a pretty steep incentive to address the violation.
So if a, if a party does a neat job of boarding up a window, but it's still a boarded-up window, how does that fall into place?
It doesn't. You know, if it's a window, it needs to be replaced as a window. Now, we do work with folks who are working on, you know, addressing their issues, so it may be that there's a boarded-up window that's sticking around a little bit longer than, you know, might seem to be reasonable, but, you know, if an entity, if a person's actively engaged in code compliance, then, you know, the city works with somebody to get there. We also don't chase every window in town. You know, if you go down the alley behind Metcalf, you know, you will find some broken windows and those are not high priority code enforcement cases for us. But, you know, noticing the broken window on Ferry Street with a board up, that one will become a high priority case for us when the time is right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Deion, question?
Aaron, I'm, I'm interested in where we might be going with affordable and supportive housing with Senate House Bill 1406, which has passed and we see the county has taken some action on that. And I'm concerned that maybe we would be leaving some money on the table to help out some folks here in town, especially since it would be, be able to help people with rental assistance who are 60% of the meeting income.
Yeah, I can actually answer that. I can answer that for you.
Okay. So I'm, I'm interested if we could have a little work session on that and talk about a bit.
Absolutely. We're going to. I've been meeting with the other mayors and with the, and with the commissioners. We've already had a couple of conversations regarding that. We'll need to discuss an ordinance if we want to be included in that. So absolutely, that'll probably be coming up with a work session in September.
Awesome, because some, some of those deadlines have come up pretty quickly. I think July 27th of next year is when we'd have to have it in place.
Yeah, I think we have to have a resolution in place by January of 2020. Yeah, I think we have to have a resolution in place by January of 2020. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to know.
All right. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item tonight. This last week has been sending out financial information, as you know. I did email out the June financial report. And then in addition tonight, I've put the more comprehensive report at your spots on the dais. You take a look at it. I did put a narrative in there where I talk a little bit about, or I write a little bit about what I see going on in the budget. If the writing seems a little boring, it's because our budget's a little boring right now. We're just tracking right along as we projected. There aren't any real surprises in there. Cash flow at the end of June, we were within $6,000 when you look at all the money coming in and all the money going out. So it's a pretty even cash flow through the year at this point, and that's right where we should be at June 30. Areas that I am watching, there are two. One are interest rates. The Federal Reserve has been making some changes and it's adjusting what's called the rate curve. And some of the things I see on it, there's signals of recessions, and you'll hear that being talked about in the news, and especially when you watch the Dow today, took quite a drop. So things are getting jittery out there. So we're just kind of keeping an eye on that and seeing what that might say for us. The other area that I want to kind of keep an eye on as we get into November is the issue about our funds for arterial streets. And in particular, we have the car tabs fees and that coming in and see what will that do. I know Mark has mentioned that in the past, his concerns about that, because that could have a pretty good impact on the amount of work that we're able to do in that. So as we get closer to November, it'll be interesting to see what traction that does get or doesn't get, and what that will mean for the city and our street projects. So that's what I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember reports. Councilwoman?
I don't have anything.
All right. Councilwoman Corningate?
I just actually wanted to address the recent newsletter from the museum, from the Cedar Woolly Museum, and just mention that while I support our museum fully, I haven't been, I've been a bit disappointed by the not last newsletter. I finally got this sent when a friend sent it to me, and I reached out, and unfortunately, I did not hear back. I was hoping to hear back. What I would like to ask is that people just kind of think about, if you got to see that newsletter, just think about how that would affect you if you were a person of color. Or in our community, we have a large LBGQ community. We have a Jewish community. We have lots of people of color, and even a Catholic community here. Well, and I know my message was seen, but to not have a response, I have no idea what the context was of that newsletter. The context would have really made a difference for a lot of folks. And sorry, I have some really sporadic notes here. And I think that the newsletter actually kind of normalized hate and bigotry. And that's just my own opinion, but that's what I saw. And I've been getting lots of phone calls from the large faith community here in Cedar Woolly and around the county, because the newsletter did tie in other cities around the county, Stanwell, and down to Stanwood and up to Waukam County. When I first saw the newsletter, it just reminded me of when I was first running for city council. And I had a gentleman tell me to my face that he wouldn't vote for me just because of my color. And around that same time, and since then, I have heard the N-word used quite a few times. Now, that's just me, but I'm sure I'm not the only one. I've been hearing stories from other folks that have experienced the same things. And I will say that, I mean, it might not affect many of you in this room, but it does us. And many of us are business owners like myself, and we really all do care about the community as well. And so to be ignored when I'm asking for an explanation, it wasn't... And I understand that the museum, maybe out of embarrassment, did not reach out, maybe just to save face, but I am actually just looking for a response so that we know how to handle it in the future. And as of like two years ago, I did ask for us to bring a social and racial justice conversation, a conversation that's mediated, that I actually participated in up in New Halum. That was really nice. And we all left respecting each other and understanding each other. I would love to see that here. I had a student reach out to me two years ago that was having issues at our school, at our middle school here, and nothing happened. And so that kid is still wondering, like, what are we gonna do? And we can't let our kids down. So what I would suggest that the museum do, I mean, it's just a suggestion, of course, is first, it would be really nice if they could, I'm not sure if maybe they have, diversify that they're bored, so that this kind of thing might not happen again in the future. Second, it would be really nice to have a race and social justice conversation for everyone to take part in, the museum, the library, the city, all of our departments, our schools, our whole community, so we all get on the same page. And another thing would be if they would please send... That newsletter hit so many doors all around the world, and every mail carrier that would see that would see the pictures and article with no context. And it would be really nice if they could send something to those same folks and publicly, not necessarily asking for an apology, but that would be great, but just some kind of explanation would be nice, some context to it. So if they would do that, and if we could get on board with a conversation here, I would really appreciate it myself. So I'm just asking for that. Thank you.
So I do want to make a comment.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was supposed to read a letter.
Okay.
I was supposed to read a letter from... I've actually gotten a lot of response from the faith community about this. And I did get a letter from Pastor Bethany Hall Summers, who is in Burlington. If you don't mind if I read it, I'm sorry to take so much time. This is addressed to the city council. My name is Bethany Hall Summers, and I am the pastor at Burlington Lutheran Church in Burlington. While my church is not in Cedar Woolly city limits, I have many parishioners who live in Cedar Woolly. I am writing in response to the article in the Cedar Woolly Museum newsletter entitled Ku Klux Klan at Church Dedication. The article is chilling in its normative portrayal of an ugly racist history. The article speaks to the wide span of the KKK and Skagit Valley in 1925, and then invites current leaders to share family memories and copies of photos about the KKK, especially their activities in Skagit. The newsletter includes a picture of a KKK wedding in Skagit Valley where participants are all clad in white hoods. Obviously, like much of the country, Skagit Valley's history is marred by white supremacy and racism. This article provides an opportunity for local leaders such as yourselves to take a stand in healing and restoration of that ugly past. I implore you to take leadership in Cedar Woolly denouncing the historical presence of the KKK and reminding all of your constituents that racism and white supremacy are not welcome in your diverse and thriving community. Thank you for your hard work, you do, on behalf of Skagit County. May God bless you. Peace, Bethany, pastor of Bethany Hall Summers. Thank you.
And Jermaine, my heart goes out to you, and I know we've already had conversation about this. I did have, Carolyn reached out to me this afternoon. I did have a chance to talk to her. She sent me, I invited her to come tonight to talk about the article, maybe to answer some questions. She instead decided that she wanted to send a statement. I'm gonna read the statement, and she says to the Cedar Woolly Council, the Cedar Woolly Statement of Purpose. She says, "The educational purpose of the Cedar Woolly Museum shall be to collect, catalog, preserve, exhibit, disseminate, and maintain materials and artifacts of historical and cultural significance to Cedar Woolly and the surrounding communities. We regret that some of you were offended by our latest newsletter, which was not our intent. We were just sharing a part of our history, not realizing the impact the picture and article had. We do and will learn from our mistakes. If any of you wish to speak to the museum board directly, we invite you to our next board meeting, September 5th, starting at 6:30 PM. Everyone will be given a chance to address this issue. Thank you." And she ends it with saying, "We should all learn from the past so that we do not repeat it." So that was her response, so I know...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is September 5th...
A Thursday?
It's a Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, where's the location of their board meeting?
It will be at the museum.
Okay, thank you, Kymon.
Yes.
May I speak?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, as a museum board member, that this definitely does not reflect the opinion of the entire board of the museum. We don't see that newsletter before it goes out, and I'm sure if it had gone in front of the board, it wouldn't have gone out. So my apologies for that.
Thank you. Brenda? Do you have a... Oh, Jillian. I can't remember.
So have you... All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kinzer, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Any reports?
No.
All right. Councilwoman DeYoung?
Yes. I just wanted to thank the council for letting me phone in the last meeting. It was beneficial, thank you. And also, what a great time we've been having down at the park for the concert series, summer concert series, which was, in my opinion, very well attended. A lot of kids and families had a great time, especially with the face painting and hula hoops and just dancing. Additionally, I would like to thank that they chose to use the Helping Hands Food Bank as their charity of choice, and we were able to raise $2,051 in $1 raffle tickets over the course of those four concerts. And what a great testament it is to the community that they wanted to participate in helping others. So very happy to have been asked as a personal sponsor, and also that the city was a sponsor of that event, and hope to see it in our subsequent budgets moving forward. It's great, good stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Dunleavy?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kelly?
I would say the only thing I have to add to tonight's stuff is that it was really well attended at our grand opening ribbon cutting for the new market. And if you haven't been in there yet, I definitely encourage you to go in. It's a great new market. It's a good addition. It's well-appointed, and I find the food was... I've been eating salad bar there on a regular basis, so...
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Paula, wasn't there also, there was also a ribbon cutting for...
Double Barrel BBQ.
Yeah.
That was the week before.
So I want to say I'm very excited about the market, too. It was fun being there, and it's great to have a market that we can walk, you know, to town, get what we need, walk back home. I absolutely love it, and I'm very excited that it's here. I just have a couple of things. First off, there was a letter that was submitted by Don Collin. He's the chairperson for the Wildcat Steelhead Club. And he says, "Your honor, although the dredging project was a Wildcat Steelhead Club project up at..." This is up at Northern State Pond. "I, as a chairperson for the club, would like to thank you and all your personnel for the aid and the cooperation in that project. I personally want to thank Nathan Salsina for his, quote, 'above and beyond' in his cooperation, end quote. It's seldom you find a person like him, especially in this day and age." Again, thanks, Don Collin. That's very true. We really appreciate Nathan.
We do.
The other thing that I would like to do is, so, it's a special thanks to Robert and Sally Carlson for their invitation to me to participate in National Night Out. And that's a holiday that's celebrated, it's been celebrated 36 years, and it's the first Tuesday of each August. However, I did not learn about it until last year. But we did have a good time, and it was a chance to meet a lot of people within the neighborhood, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to do that. Along the same lines, if you're interested in doing something with your neighbors, on September 28th, it'll be National Good Neighbor Day. So maybe that's a participate, opportunity to participate. So not to carry on with what you said or to draw it out, but I do want to say that I too was, there were a lot of ministers that reached out to me. One in particular, Eric Wagenhock, who would like his letter. He wanted to be here tonight so that he could read his letter, but he had a council meeting, so he asked if I would read it, and I said that I would. He says, "Dear Cedar Woolly Council, first off, thank you for the work that you do and for hearing people out every day. Second, thank you for taking the time to read this letter. I don't write these very often. In fact, this is my first. I want to talk about the recent newsletter from the Cedar Woolly Museum featuring a large picture of men, women, and children dressed in KKK robes and two articles from the 1920s that depicted KKK activities in a positive light. These articles were printed with no context whatsoever. The museum made no mention of why they printed them and what they contributed to the teaching of the town's history. To give the benefit of the doubt, I do not believe the museum promotes nor agrees with the KKK and its racist values, but the museum could and should have provided context. For example, it could have said, 'The museum seeks to educate people not only about these times in our history, but the worst lest we repeat the past. Here is an example of the past racism masquerading as Christian faithfulness,' end quote. As previously noted, the pictures and the articles had no context whatsoever. In generous light, I would attribute this to lack of quality control and oversight.'" Why do I bring this up? "I believe that we do not call out or name or condone those acts. I can be guilty of this as well. In 2015, a mixed racial couple at my church left Cedar Woolly for Bellingham. While taking a summer bike ride, a car drove by them with a driver yelling racial epithets at them. The child asked, 'What were those words?'" And the family decided right then and there to move out of town and did so in a matter of months. I shared the story with my church, but not outside the church. Without the conversation, we cannot address the problem, i.e., verbal harassment of biracial couple who was ran out of town in Cedar Woolly. My silence contributed to that. Whoever the yeller was, he or she won. So I do not want to let this letter from the museum silently slide away. Doing so sends a message, everything is okay, to the wrong people who read them whenever they, whoever they may be. The museum does some very fine things for Cedar Woolly. History is what makes any group of people a people. They preserve the town's history. I value their work. I don't want to rush to faults and debilitating accusations. At the same time, I feel the publishing of the articles without context was not responsible on their part and could have been done much better." I believe at this point, before anything escalates, is to have a conversation where the museum can explain why it published the article and why it did and did not hear the impact that it had on others. I had wanted to attend the August 14 council meeting, but I will not be there. There'll be another meeting that evening. If I was to be there, this is what I would have said. Peace. Pastor Eric Wagenhock. And so in light of that, I do want to remind everybody that Carolyn did reach out. They do want to hear what people have to say. They do want to connect with everyone. They do not condone what the KKK and white supremacy are all about. And again, she asks that if you have something that you want to say, share. If you have concerns, please show up at their meeting, which is September 5th, starting at 6:30. And she said everyone will be given a chance to talk about it. So I encourage people to do that.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kelly?
One of the things I've noticed in some of the other cities and jurisdictions is adding a statement to their city websites of how all are welcomed here.
Right.
And if that's not in ours, can we think about adding that, too?
I think that's a great suggestion. Absolutely. So, one thing that I do want to say in the conversation with Carolyn is that she... is seriously considering that any time there's articles put out that, um, are very questionable, they would put a disclaimer, saying that we are just reporting history, but we do not agree with whatever their acts or the message or whatever. So, all right. Okay, thank you, thank you, Jermaine.
Thank you.
All right.
I like, I like all the suggestions.
Okay. All right, well, we'll do that. We'll get on that. Um, I'm going to open this up for public comment. It is now 8:10, and if you have a public comment you would like to make, please come forward. I need your name and address, and if you can keep it to three minutes. And, Aaron, do you mind clocking this for us? Three minutes?
Richard Aldrich. I was here three weeks ago or so to complain about the traffic on Reed and, at the end of Reed.
Yeah.
Three intersections. You managed to put a big stop sign coming down the hill, but nothing on the other side of the other three streets. Now everybody figures it's a freeway, and the noise was quiet for about four or five days. Now the kid is back to making all kinds of rockets every morning at exactly a quarter after eight. And it is very annoying when you're ill. Some people have to sleep. When they can't sleep at night, they have to sleep in the morning. I would appreciate something being done. There's not been a policeman, have not seen a policeman there at that time in the morning, and I've gone out and sat by the street to see if there was one who went by at about a quarter after eight, but no, nothing. If everybody's so interested in Sejowoli, you know the comment? I moved here three years ago. You know the comment that I get when I tell people I live in Sejowoli? There are nothing but bars in that town anyway. They want to know when they're going to get a good store that handles everything, a peniza or whatever. That they should be looking into that to boost the town for all the building that's going on. There's not going to be enough people to fill those buildings. That's the end of my three minutes, I imagine.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes.
Two things here.
Um, I need your name and address.
Yes, dear, I'm getting there. Uh, two topics. First one, Richard came and talked to me and, oh...
Name and address.
Sorry, Julia, yes. Julian Povici, 519 Sap Road.
All right, thank you.
Brickyard. Uh, anyways, I came here because Richard, uh, Richard wanted me to help him, and I'm just here to substantiate that. And, um, what it is, is, uh, the guy goes up and down, guy, girl, it, whatever. I haven't seen the person. Uh, but anyways, at the approximate time that he talks about, I hear him go down the hill, and then I hear him go down Reed. And then when he's coming back up, I hear that. So, one day, he made the fatal mistake of driving in front of my house, and he made that noise. So, 911. Talked with Sejo, gave him the basic information, and then later on in the day, I was working around my house, then I heard him come back. So then I drove up, my car, my little super duper telephone extraordinaire, you know, they're not really telephones anymore. And so, I took a picture of the car and the license plate, and a picture of the house and the house number. And then I called back Sejo, talked with the same guy, gave him that information. So, um, basically, kind of supporting what he says, it's been going on for a long time, and pretty much anybody that's about 250 feet from that intersection at North Region Sap hears this. And that's about it. I stay ahead of that time. So I'm going on to the second one, Berg, so start over. Okay. So the second yard thing is...
That's a negative. You've got about a minute 24 seconds left.
Yeah. And so, um, I know Markey, I've done a lot of things that Markey has done for, you know, maybe as long as he has, not in the same capacity. But anyways, the reason why I want to talk to you guys is that, is not my job to treat stormwater, okay? It's your job, okay? The feds passed it, you know, treating stormwater. I retired from the wastewater treatment plant at the city of Everett for 25 years. And so, unfamiliar with all these things, but the feds passed the law, pushed it down to the states. The states pushed it down to the counties. The counties pushed it down to the cities. The cities pushed it down to the builders. And here's where it stopped, with us. But it's not my job. It's, you guys have got to treat the stormwater, and I would appreciate you guys getting in gear and getting this damn thing out. I'm tired. I've been, you know, I've been paying for real stormwater treatment for 25 years. Part of our dues covers the operation of the equipment for those ponds, okay? So for 25 years, I've been paying for stormwater. And then a couple of years ago, you guys come up with this stormwater bill. It's like, for what? It's like, I'm paying you guys, what am I getting for it? You know? It's like, just going down. At least when I pay my dues, you know, I know I'm paying to maintain the pumps, and I've had the pumps rebuilt. They've been rebuilt. That's it? So anyways...
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I tried to set the alarm to crow like a chicken, but I wouldn't do it.
You're lucky we're in public here, buddy. Thank you.
All right. If there is no one else, I will close, um, public comment. It is 8:16, and we will move on to new business. Um, and I believe this is you? John?
Thank you. So, what you have in front of you today is, uh, a rather simple ordinance intended to address the impacts of, uh, power line easements and gas line easements and ingress egress easements on brand-new lots. So this only affects when somebody's doing some sort of subdivision, long plat, boundary line adjustments, something to that effect. The concern is that when new lots are created, if there's already an existing easement going across for something like those, those three types that I'm, uh, talking about, so if there's already a, a major gas line easement or a major power line easement, you, we don't necessarily want that easement area to count as the buildable area of the lot. So if there's a minimum lot size in, say, the R7 zone, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet, and I have a, a display up there, say you're creating lots 1, 2, and 3, if you've got that big easement going down the middle of it, we don't want that to count towards that minimum 6,000 square feet because, uh, you can't use the land that is on, uh, these major transmission line easements. Uh, in, in the cases that we have, uh, the gas line going east-west and north-south through town, it's typically somewhere between 50 and 100 feet wide, and there's a high-pressure gas line in there. Um, the gas company comes through and maintains to make sure that there's no trees or other, anything on top of it. Um, so you can't put your swingset out there, you can't park out there, uh, you really, are very limited use, and you certainly can't build out there. And, so, uh, same thing with the over, the large overhead power lines. Those are, um, primarily go up by the golf course area, and they have somewhere between 100 and 150-foot easement. You, you wouldn't want to buy a lot with, if you have, you know, a 6,000-square-foot lot and, say, 2,000 square feet of it is underneath that power line, you can't put a bench, you can't, you can't enjoy that property. So, um, the, the proposed change to the code is to specify that these easements do not count towards the minimum lot size area for new lots, nor does it count towards the building lot line. So, a building, uh, a lot needs to have 40 feet wide for a building to be built on, typically, in most of the, our, the residential neighborhoods. So, you need, you need to make sure that that lot provides that 40-feet, uh, square area for a house to actually be built. Similarly, on the right side of this, um, display, you'll see driveway easement. So sometimes a lot will be behind a house, um, so the only way to get there is to, to put a driveway easement across another lot. So that also can't be impeded. The, the, the lot on which the easement exists cannot, that lot owner cannot use that for parking, they can't use it for landscaping, they can't use it for anything. It's somebody else's driveway, and it has to be left clear for the enjoyment of another property. So, it, uh, also, since you can't build on it, you can't park on it, you can't recreate on it, uh, we're proposing that any easements like that do not count towards the buildable lot line or the minimum lot size. And that is the extent of this proposed amendment.
All right. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that appreciated that this came before the Planning Commission and that there was a robust conversation about it, I think it was last month. So, um, I would support this. Is there any, um, urgency to have this done on the first reading, or is there anything that would prevent us from doing this on the first reading?
You're free to make a motion if that's, if the council agrees with you.
It would be ordinance 1936-19 if you wanted to make a motion.
Are there any other questions? If not, okay, this first read, we can move on. So, Mr. Freiburger?
So, you have before you the memorandum, TIB grant approval and match requirements. Basically, we're submitting on two projects. Oops, sorry. Basically, we're submitting on two projects, that you've seen both of them before. The first is the SR20 West Lane Widening and Safety Improvements Project that we're designing, essentially for Skagit County to provide, uh, access to the new Behavioral Health Stabilization Campus next to Life Care Center. And it also adds Center-Turn Lane, basically from Hodgins Road out to just, uh, to the west of the Life Care Center. That's a requirement of that, uh, project to put that widening in. And so the county is providing a good part of the money for that through a $500,000 economic development grant, uh, that was awarded two years ago, and a further commitment of $285,000 towards the construction of the crossing. That still leaves us short. Uh, the memo mentions that the preliminary estimate was 1.1 million. Uh, we've completed an updated estimate as of today, and the project went up to 1.3 million. Uh, that's basically because of DOT requirements, uh, that they are, um, telling us to include in our design for this, that require replacement of some of the asphalt that, uh, we originally assumed we could, uh, utilize as is. We'll have further discussion with them on that, uh, but it did raise the project price by about $200,000. And, uh, so that will increase the amount we'll be asking from TIB from $300,000 to about $500,000. I don't think TIB is particularly excited about building projects on the state routes. Um, in fact, they were decidedly cool about that when I met with their representative to talk about this. So, I'm not sure how well this one will be received, but it did score well last year, and would have been funded, I was told, but for the fact that we had gotten all of those projects the previous year. So we're going to try again, and, um, the project basically has to be built in some form to allow the county's project to go ahead. We have a contingency plan to shorten the widening. Uh, if, if TIB does not fund this, uh, we can reduce the length of the widening to just incorporate both the life care and the new driveway. That's not ideal, but it, it will work and fulfill the purpose, uh, for the county. So, that's that particular project. We don't have anything, uh, in it other than our in-kind, uh, match for the design and construction engineering. Uh, it's worth about $10,000 in the project. The second project is the overlay on Jamison from 800 feet west of Third Street, that's the tennis courts to, uh, to Township Street. Last year, we applied for this project, the first half of it, from, uh, the tennis courts to Fifth. This year, we're applying for the entire stretch. Uh, it adds a, a fair amount to the, another 300-some-thousand to the project, but, uh, TIB was, um, I met with their representative, and he said, "Yes, it makes sense to try to fund this all at one project," so we're going to go ahead and submit the whole thing. Uh, the match requirement, uh, is a little higher than usual on these projects because one of the things that comes in train with these widening project, or, excuse me, these overlay projects, is a state requirement that we upgrade all of the ADA ramps, which I talked about a little earlier. Uh, anybody that's been down on Jamison knows there's lots of them. In fact, for this, uh, this, uh, seven blocks that are involved here, there's 36 separate ramps that we would have to deal with. The estimate's about $5,000 a ramp, so that gets to be a pretty good-sized project by itself. TIB also changed the rules on this this year. Uh, they no longer, uh, well, they will pay for the ramps, uh, and, and they have, without any complaint in the past, because it is a requirement. Uh, now they, uh, basically don't give you as many points in your review if you're, if the, and it's on a sliding scale from 0 to 5 ramps, 5 to 7, 7 to 10, that you lose up to 10 points if you're, if you're using their money to pay for the ramps. Well, we have 36 of them, so there was very little that we could do about, uh, that. So, we've made the decision to approach this, uh, as a ramp reprization project and go ahead and apply our REIT funds that we'll be setting aside, uh, for this next year, for this project. That's the 50,000 portion of that. Uh, and then the rest of that, we will take from, uh, our TBD funds. And, uh, I'll just reiterate what I've said before and what Doug said earlier tonight. Uh, we are somewhat at risk on our TIB funds because of the November ballot. Uh, we should have the funds in place for this particular project for next year, but it will give us some issues in upcoming years. We'll have to be looking at that closely, depending on the results of that. So we are recommending that you approve, uh, staff submitting these applications, the mayor to sign these applications, and, uh, the funding that we've requested as match for the Jamison project, and that's given in the recommendations on page 3 of the memorandum. So, I would request your action on that.
So are there any questions or concerns?
Uh, no.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yeah, just one comment, that, um, it's the number-one thing that comes up in my word when people ask, you know, when they redo their car tabs, which is, "What is this TBD? What's this fund?" And so that's our Transportation Benefit Fund that we tax ourselves on when we buy our tabs. So that's, I just wanted to put clarity for, that that's what the TBD stands for. It's not to be determined, but it is actually something that was, uh, done council-matically in 2014.
The setting standard of an engineer is the old use of acronyms.
Right. And, and, uh, so when you're saying that's being put at risk, that's the I-976 initiative that's out there that would, uh, greatly hobble such types of, uh, great community restoration of roads, so, yeah. Thank you.
All right. So we are looking for a motion. It's on page 181, and it is to move to authorize staff to apply for the grants identified in this memo and to commit the local match dollars identified in this memo. Do I have...
I do want to make one comment.
All right. Councilwoman Kelly?
Um, the Chamber of Commerce runs the local vehicle licensing services here in town, and initially, when this, uh, $20 fee went into effect, we heard a lot of comments from people. But I think that the staff at the office has done a good job of explaining what that means and why it's been implemented, and that it seems to have really gone down as far as the complaining goes. I think that the reason the state is dealing with this more is because of the light rail, um, uh, fees that were imposed down in Stonemish to, um, which county is, Tacoma?
Pierce? No?
It is Pierce.
It is Pierce?
Yeah. So from Stonemish to Pierce County, those, they got a huge increase in theirs, and that's different than ours. $20 is not that big a deal for an annual fee. I know everybody would prefer that we still had nickel postage and 25-cent gas, yeah. But we don't. Things go up and down. Things go up and, you know, in costs, and that's just one of the ones that we do have. I think it's a good use of the funds that we have put here and that we've been reasonable about it. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, is there a motion?
I would move that they apply, because I saw that date, and we need to move on this.
All right. So is that a motion?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Dunleavy, seconded by Councilwoman Kelly, to approve the grants, the grant monies. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. So, if there is...
I forgot, I did have one comment.
Okay.
Mr. Lee has moved to divorce me. Could we please drop that, at least in conversation, and just refer to me as Councilperson Dunn?
We can do that. Councilwoman Dunn. All right, if there are no objections, we are adjourned.